Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our throne.
Thank you. Could we now observe a moment of silence for Mr. Roger Krasominski, who passed away last month? And as a former trustee, to show our respect for him. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busino?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here and Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda items with any additions, deletions, or corrections. Ms. Posey?
I would just like to note that on the consent agenda item number 10 was an add-on. However, it was published on the website and printed copies include this agenda item. We now have a proposed add-on, which would be 24A, under Human Resources, and it's a request to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Water and Sewer Supervisor. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the amended agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the bills. There's two bill runs to approve. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers. Support. Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval of previous meeting minutes, those being from December 18th. Are there any additions, deletions, or correction to those minutes?
Madam Chair, I would like to propose a correction to the December 18th, 2019 meeting minutes. The correction would be under trustees' comments to strike through the last line, which indicates the Human Resources/General Counsel Performance Evaluation, as it was a duplicated line.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the amended minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Then we have the closed session minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the closed session meeting minutes from December the 18th, 2019, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Busino to approve the closed session minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Thank you. That motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine matters that frequently come before the Board. If anyone on the Board wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name, and remember you have a three-minute time limit.
Off 24-mile road, I'll be living pretty much within the park. I just wanted to read something that I read in the Chronicle, which was dated the 2nd of this year, January 2020. On April 9th, 62-year-old man from Gross Pointe was killed when in an area of 23 Mile and Card Road. A cement truck was traveling eastbound on 23 Mile and a gray Cadillac driven by the man was traveling westbound on 23 Mile. The vehicles collided head-on just west of-
Sir, this is for agenda items only. I don't believe the park is on the agenda for tonight.
It is.
You can speak at the 2nd.
25th.
Pardon?
Number 25 on the agenda.
Of course. Let's do the survey. One second.
The vehicles collided head-on just west of Card Road. On May 18th, a two-vehicle crash left a young man dead and another injured after the vehicles crashed at the intersection of 24 Mile and Card Road. A 24-year-old man of Washington Township was pronounced dead at the crash scene. The driver of the other vehicle was transported to the hospital and treated for non-life-threatening In regards to the park, if the township wants to bring the city traffic here, then we need the lights that are involved with city traffic. May there be stop signs, flashing lights, and/or whatever that we need to deal with these kind of traffic issues. I would think that the township, along with us as citizens, are going to be proactive when it comes to that, not reactive, and when other things happen like that. As far as the stop signs and anything else that can be done, many things need to come first before groundbreaking on the park right there at 24 Mile and Foss. How many amenities? There's like nine amenities in this park. We have the splash park, children's playground, the main pavilion, tennis and pickleball courts, main picnic pavilion, the dog park, beach volleyball, and then open field activities. I mean, that's gonna... There's more activities in this one park than any of the parks in Oakland or Macomb County. So how, if we're only going to use 28 acres in this 42-acre parcel, why would we have so many things in one small area that's going to generate so much traffic? I guess in closing, all these issues that I brought up, it's not just for myself, it's several of my neighbors in the area, and all of us as citizens is why I stand before you today. We're all very concerned, but thank you for listening and, of course, Happy New Year.
Thank you. I apologize, I was wrong. It is on the agenda.
Oh, no problem. Thank you very much for-
You're welcome.
-hearing what I had to say.
Happy New Year, everybody. My name is Kim Hemmy. I also would like to talk about the park, of course. I would like to state that nothing is in cement until contracts are made and the ground is broken. Though we have mentioned the subject at the last meeting, we pray the Board will really take a closer look at moving one of these popular attractions to another location. The one that causes the most concern to us is the splash pad. This extremely popular feature can be easily moved to another location. The plans of the dog park and pickleball courts have been placed from one area to another, so moving the splash pad would not be unheard of. You have heard from all of us talk about the congestion nightmare that the park will generate. You have heard from many of us speak about the horrible traffic that already exists and having two major roads closed down in the immediate area. As Dan just mentioned, there was an accident resulting in a death at 24 and Card. This is right down the road. That alone speaks volumes of what we are dealing with with our infrastructure. So we ask that you please move the splash pad. That alone will help ease the congestion tremendously in this area. We know the park will be built here, so we want to work with you guys. We want to be a team, we want to be good neighbors. I'd like that saying, and just don't quote me word for word, "You're like in the woods, but you're not seeing the forest." The forest is the master plan. We live in the woods, and we want you guys to look at the woods and put yourself there. I thank you for listening and hopefully working with us on these future issues. Thank you.
Hello, Jay Lampke, 46759 Millpoint. I'd like to speak to the compensation portion that's coming up. I want the best employees and the best representatives that we can get our hands on. You cannot get the best by paying the least. We have to make sure that we come up with packages that will attract the best firemen, the best council people, the best engineers, the best workers. It's very important. You know, if you don't spend the money, you'll lose a lot more by hiring incompetence. Also, I see on the Facebook, a lot of people complaining about everything wasn't voted on. This should be voted on. You vote when you elect these people up here, when you elect your county, state, federal elected officers. And if you don't like what they did, then you vote them out next time, but they're here to do that stuff. We have 12 pages in the bill run. Should we vote on every one of them? Every article in there? I think not. The other thing I like to do is I like to commend the two firemen that are being recognized tonight, as well as the rest of their department, for keeping a good, safe watch over us. Thank you.
John Parkinson, Happy New Year. So I want to speak on Agenda Item 14A, and again, for 15A, B, C. Real quick, 14A. What exactly does the confidential assistant to the Human Resource Director do? You know, is this pay increase necessary? Also, in 15A, B, and C, I noticed that the wording was changed. Last meeting we were at, the agenda stated it was in review for increase, or, you know, for increase in pay. This review, this one says review for full-time elected officials. So is this still a review, or is this up for an increase in pay for the elected officials? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Gravow. My address is on file with the clerk. Couple things this evening. Congratulations to the two firefighters. Great job. Look forward to the chief giving the presentation. To the Board, number 14, I request that you guys back up and put this off the agenda. You guys have said for numerous meetings, and correct me if I'm wrong, the last couple of years, you were going to do a review of the General Counsel. Why are we considering compensation for his assistant when you guys haven't done the job to review him? Let's get the job done right the first time. Let's do what we need to do and then follow through with the rest. There is no reason you have an assistant if we don't have the review of the General Counsel. We've talked about this numerous times. Let's stop putting it off. Let's get it done. You guys are in a hurry, you guys want to do the park, you haven't done the infrastructure. Let's look at the infrastructure. We have tons of property all around that park area that is shut down. The roads, you cannot get around. How do you expect the Fire Department to respond accordingly? How do you expect MedStar to respond accordingly? If we have a major incident in that park, we've now got to bring additional resources in, possibly from the north end. What's the easiest way for them to get there? Let's think about it. You've got to open these roads, the infrastructure. We've got water supply issues, and you guys are spending money like crazy. Now, there's several new people that have not been here for over the years. Ms. Dunn, Ms. Nevers, you guys have been here. Ms. Goodhue, you guys have been here. Where's the master plan? Some of it I've seen go into your pockets, and I'm appalled. So let's look at this and make the things right. Number 25, number 26, you guys bought property all over this township. This township's not designed to own property. We're supposed to be making it the best for the residents. If you don't do the infrastructure first, how are you going to bring people to Macomb? Nobody wants to be in a congested disaster. Let's think about it. You might want to put the brakes on. Let's start with number 14. Have a good day.
Address on file in the clerk's office. I'm up here in regards to Items 14 and 15, Items A, B, and C. I am requesting that all of these items be removed from the agenda permanently, or no vote on all of them. In regards to Item 14, this person, I believe, was just hired in and doesn't even have a year seniority on the job, and you already want to adjust her pay up for a position that may not even be needed. Doesn't make any sense. In regards to Items 15, A, B, and C, it's very easy to vote yourself to pay raise when everyone thinks are worth more than what they are. I'm going to read your press release from the Social Security Office. Social Security and Supplemental Security Income, SSI, benefits for nearly 69 million Americans will increase 1.6% in 2020. The 1.6% cost-of-living adjustment for COLA will begin with benefits payable to more than 63 million Social Security beneficiaries in January 2020. Increased payments to more than 8 million social supplemental security beneficiaries will begin in December 31st, 2019. And here you are, going to vote on a 2.5% to 2.8% increase in your pay. That's almost two and a half times what 69 million Americans are going to get this year. It just doesn't make any sense. And then, on top of that, you want to change your pay raise up to six figures plus benefits. Only one of you is up. You three elected officials, full-time elected officials, are close to earning anything what you're currently being paid on. The other two, way overpaid. You want a six-figure income? Go on out in the private sector and try to find one, because I'm tired of you spending my tax dollars. Vote no or remove them from the agenda. You're not worth six figures. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Western. Please let me also offer my condolences on the death of your colleague and our trustee, Roger Krasominski. He was well-known in the past for being a huge backer of Parks and Rec, and it seems strange not to have him here tonight when we'll be talking several Parks and Rec issues, and those are the ones I'd like to speak to tonight. In the absence of an integrated plan, it's difficult to look at the pieces that are on the agenda tonight, and I hope that you will consider them in the context of the Macomb Township Parks and Rec master plan, which is approaching the halfway mark, I think, of its five-year duration. Perhaps rather than taking up these ideas piecemeal, it would be an opportune time to update the entire Parks and Rec plan in the context of the facts and the property that we have today. It is proposed tonight that we pay Fishback over $20,000 to do some planning for the Town Center Park. Many people do not understand what and where the Town Center Park is, probably because it doesn't look much like a park, and there is not a description of it on the township website. In a separate agenda item, it is proposed to pay Fishback yet another $20,000 to come up with a plan for the former Wade Nursery site. Now, that property does have a piece of the Clinton River running through it. The county has been highlighting for some time the improved conditions of the Clinton River, and kayak and canoe launches are now in nine locations throughout Utica, Shelby Township, Sterling Heights, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens, and Harrison Townships. And the county has worked a lot to promote the mainstream of the Clinton River and the blue economy that it is a portion of. But I did not see a kayak or canoe launch proposed for the Wade property, and that seems to be something that should be given some consideration along with the other ideas there. The current park plan does not include a plan for the area behind the recreation center on the township grounds, where the county administered the grant and refurbished that pond and restocked it. I think that there was an intention for there to be a walking path around that, which wouldn't seem to be a difficult thing to do now, but I don't see any plans for that. So I'm suggesting that we look at the Parks and Recs improvements as part of an integrated project rather than piecemeal. I think that we also purchased property up in 26 Mile, intended to be Parks and Rec, but I don't see that as part of the plan. It would also be nice to make the revised plans for the Eli Whitney Park available to the public, posted in the lobby perhaps. Thank you.
Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I'm making public comment regarding Agenda Items 14 through 15. Specifically, there's... I had a question, and I talked with Clerk Posey earlier today regarding an attachment at page 152, which shows Macomb Township trustees receiving retiring medical benefits. She was going to look into that. I had some discussions with an attorney who specializes in retirement benefit law, and I don't know whether or not there'll be an answer to that question, but I understood that they were not receiving any health care benefits, and that would include any trustees who have been removed from office or resigned.
That's correct, Mr. Cusmano. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I guess I have a question for everyone who can hear my voice. Who among you believes that you're being paid what you're worth? Who among us doesn't believe that they're being paid too little? But most of us cannot vote for our own pay or increases out to our own pay. Did we... And in respect, regard to the illogical argument that you get what you pay for, did we get the best with Dino Bucci, given all that he was paid? In fact, it wasn't even enough. You know, one time, Dino Bucci said, "I treat it like it's my own money," and I thought that was an admirable comment until developments and revelations came to light through the federal investigation of corruption in Macomb County. So really, what we need to do is elect people based on their character and their integrity, not thinking that we're going to get the best for paying the most money. Also, the illogical argument that whether or not certain townships that are larger require more worker, more skill than townships that are smaller. That hasn't been shown or proven in any of these reports or recommendations, which always seem to come up with that the people being compensated are not being compensated highly enough. And it's... I've never once seen, except for in regards to the trustees on this particular occasion, that the trustees are being paid more in this township than in comparable areas or comparable townships of our same size. For that reason, I would be requesting a no vote on the increased compensation packages. And again, there's been a reduction in the standard of living of everyone else under the sun in Michigan, and especially in this region. And to think that somehow or another, public servants are floating in the clouds and not subject to that decline, which has not been recouped even with the recent increases, is just wrong, and frankly, it's immoral. Thank you.
Very well, then, we will move on to the presentations for the Fire Department. Chief Phillips, will you take the lead on this, please?
Good evening, Madam Supervisor, members of the Board. Before I make the presentations, I'd just like to point out the monthly report that I placed in front of you before this evening's meeting. We ended 2019, excuse me, another record-breaking year at 5,427 calls for service. Most importantly is that box with the average response time. You'll notice that in December of 2017, the average response time was 6 minutes and 12 seconds. December of 2019, we lowered that to 4 minutes and 52 seconds, which is a direct result of the dedicated service from all of the personnel working together within the Fire Department. 2020 has been off to a very good start for us, in addition to the two presentations that I'm going to make this evening. This afternoon, we were notified that the Macomb County Fire Chiefs Association has selected firefighter Joe Warren to receive the County Firefighter of the Year Award, and will be presented that at our Legislative Dinner at the end of February, and I'll ask him to attend the meeting in March to be recognized. In addition, we were notified that one of our firefighters is also one of the two finalists that's still in the running to receive the Chief Gene Shepherd Memorial Scholarship through the Macomb County Fire Chiefs Association, and we should have an answer sometime next week as to the status of that. And to top it off, later this year, one of our firefighters was accepted into and will be attending the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program later this year, which is a two-year program dedicated on structural fire response and managing personnel and operations. So it's been a very good week, and we hope that this will continue throughout the year. This evening, I'm here first to recognize firefighter David McGee. Each year, the Michigan Fire Inspector Society seeks nominations for the Public Fire Educator of the Year Award. The award is given each year to one individual within the state of Michigan that has displayed exceptional commitment in delivering, excuse me, in implementing public education to those in their communities. In announcing the award, the Michigan Fire Inspector Society stated the following. Firefighter David McGee is a member of the Macomb Township Fire Department and has been active in implementing public education within Macomb Township. Firefighter McGee was instrumental in developing a junior firefighter camp during his time on the New Haven Fire Department. He has served as a Boy Scout Camp counselor and has taught fire safety education and situation awareness to many in his community. Special activities include the camps, an O2 mask program for pets, Young Marines, Boy Scout and Girl Scout programs, and educational programs for special education and special needs groups. Firefighter McGee has committed himself to educating others about the dangers associated with fire. Firefighter McGee has spent countless hours volunteering his time while off-duty to ensure that our public education program is the best that there is. On behalf of the Fire Department, I am pleased to present to you firefighter David McGee, the Michigan Public Fire Educator of the Year.
Congratulations. Good job. Proft ahead.
Proft ahead.
Last February, Sergeant Steve Stewicki was accepted into and started the 10-month Eastern Michigan University Fire Staff in Command Executive Leadership Program. This is an intensive program consisting of 350 hours of classroom instruction that required out-of-class study, preparation of papers, projects, and exams. The experience takes the officer beyond traditional operation, operational methods of strategic thinking, and creative and innovative problem-solving skills. Sergeant Stewicki did something that is unheard of within this program. He completed it, for the most part, on his own time and at his own expense. The cost of the program was in excess of $3,200. Sergeant Stewicki successfully completed the program and graduated from it this past December. I'm pleased to present to you Sergeant Steve Stewicki and his graduation from the University of Eastern, the Eastern Michigan University Fire Staff in Command Executive Leadership Program.
Congratulations. Thank you for all your service. We appreciate it, and can we please just do this again next month? We will move on now to unfinished business, and number 13 is the correction to the 2016 Employment Agreement with regards to retiree benefits for the Deputy Fire Chief. Mr. Sorty?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as indicated at the last meeting, this is a request to administratively change, have a language correction to the employment agreement with Deputy Chief Monroe. As indicated to you previously, he was hired on March 14, 2013, and at that time, the board directed both me, who was not an employee but outside counsel at that time, and the current Human Resources Director to draft an agreement. We brought that back to you later that year. But at that time, Deputy Chief Monroe was entitled to certain retiree medical and hospitalization, dental and vision, and life insurance benefits under the Macomb Township Full-Time Firefighters Agreement. At the time, there was, nothing was negotiated out, nothing was taken away, it just simply wasn't included in the exact language. There is, there is language relative to Act 345. I understand from talking with some of you that 345 doesn't completely encompass hospitalization and medical insurance. We understand that, that's why we're trying to correct this, to make sure that this is in there. We've got documentation from Mr. Brogawitz at the time, back to me after the fact that that error had been made, and then 2011, or excuse me, 2017, when the contract was renewed, the benefits did not change, and it was unfortunately was carried over. So this is just my attempt to correct what's there. The township has treated since the day of his hiring on March 14 as having this benefit available to it, the township's plan for it, and otherwise, it's on the books as being in effect. This is just simply a request to administratively correct the language in the agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, before, some questions, I just want to talk about your kind of setup. We have quite a few agenda items here to talk about, and many residents already took the microphone with concerns about these, but I want to start by reflecting on what we're going to be doing here tonight. In a report by the Michigan Township Association a few years back entitled "Compensation for Township Officials," they state, and this is a quote, "Setting the salaries of township officials is a political issue for elected officials and residents alike. It is also a sensitive issue for employers and employees." So as we move through these agenda items tonight, I have a lot of questions, and as I ask them, I acknowledge this is a sensitive topic, and many of you are going to have questions, I think, and I think you also acknowledge this is a sensitive topic. I've communicated with our township attorney and members of this board of my concerns since our last meeting relating to these agenda items, and the 100 pages of documents that have been provided in our board packet related to these items. I think it's important for residents to hear answers to some of the concerns I have asked also, so that's what I'm going to try to do with some of these items tonight. So I just want to mention that as we move on. But, so, Mr. Sorty, most of these questions, you know, I was going to ask, and I told you that I was talking to you on the phone in the car, so some of them I didn't have access to, but mostly, as you knew, I was going to ask, so I'm not catching you off guard. But, the first question, is the Deputy Chief position a union position?
No.
Okay. So, can you explain why in our packet, the entire, the entire IFF contract is included in the board packet as justification for the lifetime healthcare benefits that we provide for this position?
Well, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we're working with the new system, but I don't believe the IFF agreement was included. I believe the 2013 Michigan Association of Firefighters Full-Time, Full-Time Agreement was included, effective 2013 to 2014. I added that as, to the package for further clarification, because I did reference it in the, in the coverage of information that I, background information that I had for you. That was the contract that was in effect that Deputy Chief Monroe was subject to prior to being hired as the Deputy Chief.
Okay, and, but the Deputy Chief position is not a union position? And, and thanks for correcting me on MAFF, IFF. Like I said, we've had 100 pages in a packet, I typed that in wrong, but, so you are referring to a union contract that is justification why the Deputy Chief is entitled to benefits, and it's a non-union position?
No, I, no, he's, my point of bringing up the previous contract was that when he left his position as a sergeant, he was entitled to those benefits. When the, when the board hired him, there was never an intention by the board or by the Deputy Chief to look for those benefits to go away. The only reason I've referenced the union is to outline for you exactly what benefits were in place at the time.
Okay. So, and you know I'm going to ask this question, too. Do you think it is good practice for HR Department to use a union contract, and what is negotiated in it is justification for a non-union position? Because it's done quite often in our agenda items tonight, and it's been done in the past, it's past practice. I'm not saying this is anything unique, I was going back. We use that terminology a lot, that based on this contract or that contract is why we feel this non-union contract should, do you think that's good practice going forward?
I think it's a good practice to always take into consideration several factors any time you make any modification to anyone's compensation. So I think that that would be important, but please remember, under these circumstances, this has nothing to do with comparing Deputy Chief Monroe's position with a union. This is just simply correcting the language in his, in his contract, so that the language in the contract accurately reflects his position and how the township's treated his position since 2013.
Good. Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion on this?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to correct the 2016 Employment Agreement for the Deputy Fire Chief.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bustinow?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. Next one is to increase the compensation for the Confidential Assistant to Human Resources General Counsel. Mr. Sorty?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a request on my part to increase the pay from $51,500 to $52,787 for the Confidential Assistant to the Human Resources Director. This is a new position that was created in September 2018. She was hired on November 5, 2018. She's done a great job, and I think all of you know, we put in place the online version, electronic version of the open enrollment process. That was a substantial amount of work for our department, and, and both her and the Human Resources Specialist did an outstanding job together working on that. She is not, because of the nature of the position, part of one of the unions, and therefore not entitled to the benefits associated with the negotiated contract. She's been doing a great job. I appreciate the comments relative to this year's increase in pay for, under the, from the Social Security Administration. I'll also point out that last year, they were 2.8%, I believe, so I'm just simply, she's a great employee, and I'm looking for her to be appropriately compensated for the position, given the nature. I also understand that the comments relative to comparing to a position, and again, I'm not doing this because that's what the union's getting, I'm doing it simply as a, you know, a factor in evaluating what, what amount would be appropriate.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Sorty, if you wouldn't mind, one of the residents asked if you could just enlighten some of the residents on some of her job responsibilities. Could you just share with some of the board members who may not see what Ms. Orlando does on a daily basis, and to the public, some of the things that she assists you with on a daily basis?
Sure. She, she basically, at this point, handles all of the reviews that come in from the Planning Department and from the Engineering Department. So our department, from a legal perspective, reviews every request that comes in, as many of the departments, so I'm the same word, special, but she does the initial review, she organizes those, she participates in our meeting with the Engineering Department. I think that the Engineering Department would agree with me that since her involvement, we've substantially cut down on turnaround time, most cases being three to four days, that we're getting those reviews done. She's setting them up for me. Obviously, she's not making legal determinations, that's for me to do, but she's setting up the processes to do that. She handles various issues of human resources issues that bounce up from day to day. For instance, in the past couple days, we've had some employment issues that have bounced up, our whole department, both her and the Human Resources Specialists have spent a substantial amount of time gathering information, making sure that we have the right notices out, making sure that we have all the proper documentation, both to the elected officials and the board She, as I indicated, took a significant role in, in helping with the online open enrollment process. She's involved with me currently in working on some of our new projects that we're looking on, primarily looking at digitizing our employment files, and taking some further, you know, progressive steps in our department from that as well. She's there, her job probably changes more than anybody in the township on a day-to-day basis, depending on what demands come to our department. Many days, she works hand-in-hand with our Human Resources Specialists, assisting her as well in getting things out. I'll give you an example, today, we had, as many of you know, we had a few employment issues going on that required quite a bit of attention. We were trying to make sure that we get the interview set up for the Planning Director. She was making the phone calls to organize those various, set up those interviews, that type of thing. Some of them, for instance, one of them might be via teleconference, she's making arrangements for that. She does a pretty broad scope. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to increase the compensation for the Confidential Assistant to the Human Resource Director, General Counsel, from $51,500 to $52,787, which is approximately 2.5%.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to increase the compensation for the Confidential Assistant. This is not a resolution, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
That motion carries. Next, we have compensation and benefits review for the elected officials, the deputies, and the Board of Trustees. Mr. Sorty?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, if I may, similar, several of these are, the three of these combined are rather similar in nature, so I'll go through in detail on the first one. I'm not going to go through every single detail of what I presented to you in writing, and I certainly can answer any questions that you have relative to that, but I, I don't want to reread what's been presented to you, just as I think that that would be inappropriate. But, so, I was asked to review, as previous Human Resources Directors have been asked to review, the compensation both for the board and for the elected officials. I gave you quite a bit of history here of how that's been done in the past, why it was done, what the history was with the Compensation Committee, the disbanding of the Compensation Committee, when it was done, why the, why the type of communities that are being used as comparisons are being used, and that was done back in 2013 with quite a bit of effort put into that analysis. Based on my review at this point, and, and talking to many of you, I didn't see any reason why those things would still not apply. There wasn't anything substantial that would indicate that, that the rules that we put in, the suggestions we put in place in 2000, excuse me, that the township put in place, because I wasn't part of we at that point, put in place in 2013, wouldn't still be appropriate. So, I've laid that all out to you, identifying those communities that I thought were, were appropriately used for that information. I've identified to you that, that back in 2014, how the compensation went relative to the elect, excuse me, to the deputies, and then obviously, there was a change when this, when this board decided to compensate the deputy supervisor. At that point, it was my understanding from sitting here and paying attention, that it was the intent of this board to make sure that the deputies got paid a light compensation, to make sure that there wasn't any type of special priority given to any particular employee, that they were all performing very different jobs, but very similar responsibilities as far as reporting to their elected official. So that information is included in there as well. I've laid out for you some of the salaries, as indicated, the Clinton Township thing, one of, one of the things that's easy to look at when you look at just straight numbers, you know, that sticks out to you, the number that you're not seeing, that stick, that's sticking out is that Clinton Township also receives 7% more in defined contribution pension program than everybody else receives. So at the $84,174,000 a year salary, that's an additional almost $6,000 in pay that you're not seeing in that number. I think that's an important fact for you to, for you to lay out. I've laid out the information relative to the Western Wayans 33rd Annual Municipal Salary Survey, which we participated in, and why we used it, the history of that group, and why we used some of that information. There is, I, I understand the increase in, in pay and the comments made relative to the Social Security Administration, those are, the comments that were made were in fact, the, the information that I used going back to 2015, and I think you can see there over time, 2015, that number was 1.7%. There was no increase in '16, '17 was 0.3%, 2018 was 2%, 2019 was 2.8%, and as indicated by, by the comments made, for 2020, it'd be 1.6%. The point is to remember is that during that time, nobody got any of those increases. So you lay those out over time, and they obviously compound. I did, we prepared resolutions. After we brought this up, we took a look at some of the factors. There is some information out there based on Attorney General Position. Michigan Township Association recommends making individual, individual resolutions for each position. I believe that that language depends on your interpretation of the, of the Attorney General opinion, because it has to do more with compensation for defined benefits than it does necessarily the resolution, and it has to do with the manner in which, what, what that opinion dealt with was in fact, a, a decision by a township board to increase pay simply by increasing the budget, not necessarily making a resolution, and that's where the language comes from that says that it's necessary to have an independent, independent resolution for each position. It's been common practice of this board, and certainly substantial number of other communities to make one resolution, but given that fact that we looked at that, there- And it has to do with the manner in which, what, what that opinion dealt with was, in fact, a, a decision by a township board to increase pay, simply by increasing the budget, not necessarily making a resolution. And that's where the language comes from, that says that it's necessary to have an independent, independent resolution for each position. It's been common practice of this board and certainly substantial number of other communities to make one resolution. But given that fact that we looked at that, there certainly was no reason why we couldn't break them up, and I, I presented them as three separate resolutions because of that. I included the deputy supervisors' increase in salary with this position, because they also have not received an increase in pay. And that's where we are with that. Again, there were, there will be three separate resolutions. The first, and one, one point that I, I guess I didn't bring up, because this was brought up by one of the, one of the board members. There was a concern here. Originally, when we prepared the resolution, we referenced effective date of 2018, because that's when it first appeared on the agenda as an agenda item and would be effective, December 18th, 2019. Since that, there's been a couple of questions concerned regarding the state constitution and retroactive pay for extra work. There's varying degrees, and to say it's a gray area is probably the best way to describe it. The simple way to resolve that is simply just make it effective. You know, if you were to adopt the resolution, make that effective tonight, rather than the December 18th, 2019. So with that, I hope it wasn't too long, but I'll be certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just want to follow up to, to one of your comments. I was a trustee, we talked about. I want to talk about what he's referencing on the retroactive pay. According to a report prepared a couple of years ago by the Michigan Township Association, they, it is a report on compensation. It's called the Membership Compensation, Michigan Township Association. I referenced it a little bit earlier tonight. They said it is illegal to authorize retroactive payment of salary to elected officials. That's just simply what it says. They said the 1963 Constitution, Article 11, the Michigan Constitution, Article 11, Section 3, says neither the legislature nor any political subdivision of the state shall grant or authorize extra compensation to any public officer after the service has been rendered. So I think maybe some of what happened was these original resolutions were from December 18th. Okay? I'm thinking maybe that's what happened, but I was the one who brought that up. But I did have some other questions. You referenced the Conference of Western Wayne County. And I had last meeting said that there were entities, that unknown entities. I've been trying to do some research on it. I actually talked to Christie, I don't know, before Christmas, about who they were. Is this, is this accurate to say that the Conference of Western Wayne County is an organization of 18 Western Wayne County communities that coordinates 911 services for its 700,000 residents in a 304-square-mile region? They also represent 700,000 residents by meeting monthly to discuss issues such as legislation, transportation, public safety, substance abuse prevention. Is that the same conference that does the survey, the 33rd annual?
Yes, it's also the same conference that, that creates a publication on information gathered from 46 municipalities in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb and Washington counties, providing data in connection with the report, not only on salary ranges, but statistics about tax base, scope of services, employee size, and comparable reviews to be performed. If you note in that, in that salary survey, it contains information from communities with, from all four of those, despite the name of their organization, from all four of those counties and the information. And like I said, we, at their request, we provide the information, because we think it's beneficial to get the report back to see what others are paying. And, and I can also say that the, the four other communities that we've identified participated in that as well.
Okay. So it says that we were privy to the information. How did we participate in it? Now, we're not part of the Western Wayne, the Conference of Western Wayne County, right? Macomb Township, we're not a member, correct?
That's correct. But every year, well, they frequently put out a publication, and they gather information from 40, from all the, from all four counties.
Okay. Right. It just, when I read this, it almost made it sound like somehow we were actively participating in the survey. Okay. So it talks-
Well, and I, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we did actively participate. They asked us-
By giving them information?
Correct.
About us?
In return, by giving them information about us, which is all public information anyway, we get back the report from them that contains that information, that they do the gathering, and they do the work on and compiling it from those 46 different municipalities.
Gotcha. Okay. So you mentioned that, you know, there is a, a spreadsheet out there, or some data out there, and it said we're, we have access to that. That is, I'm pretty techy. I couldn't find that. Where is that survey? I, I found a lot on the Conference of Western Wayne, because I was wondering, are some of the, the spreadsheets that you put in the December 18th packet with some of that from the survey? Trying to figure out where that data's at, because I can't find that data. Said the spreadsheet data with details of millages taxable value, salary data by community, ratios of employees per population. I can't find that 33rd annual. With everything we put in this packet, I think it was about 100 pages for these agenda items, why didn't we put that in if it was referenced so hard?
That, that publication in and of itself is a little over, I believe, 100 pages. It's up in the human resources department.
Trustee Bussinom, if I may. I just want to let you know, I personally asked to see the book after the information was provided, and it was extremely resourceful. And all the information that was provided from that book was accurate in the information that was provided in this documentation.
Okay. So you had touched on a resolute, why are we putting the deputy salary in that resolution again? Because isn't it going to be a little harder to adjust deputy salaries? Wouldn't we have to amend the whole resolution?
Correct. I, it was just, I put it in there. It would certainly be, there would, nothing would prohibit any of you from modifying any resolution. It would just, just a suggestion and a recommendation, that's all.
Okay. The last thing I want to touch on, I didn't know how much I wanted to talk about this, even though it's in the, our packet tonight, because it's a very kind of sensitive issue, I guess. You mentioned Clinton Township, and you talk, and you mention in here that they get a little bit more of a defined contribution, and that's why they have a lower salary. But according to the information you said, they also have a hard cap in health insurance under PA 152. We, as a board, elect to opt out of the provisions of 152 in our budget, which many municipalities do. So our employees, elected officials, don't pay those, those funds where, so Clinton Township is paying a hard cap. I bet you, if you looked at a total compensation packet, that hard cap versus a 7 percent might be a wash. So if we're going to look at compensation packages, we need to look at everything and not just, you know, no offense, because we had a good talk today, just cherry pick where we want to pull from.
I, I appreciate that, and I think, I think any of you would, from talking to me, know that, I mean, you, you know, compensation review, you need to look at the whole package. I did reference the fact that, you know, that Clinton does get the extra compensation for their, in the defined contribution program. I would agree with you. At some level, if you're going to go that deep into a dive, it would be appropriate to, to look at every aspect of what they get. In the same range, it would also be appropriate to look at the job responsibilities of each of the three elected officials and how they compare. But in the end, none of that really matters. They are just factors that are recommended for you to consider, and whether or not it's appropriate for an increase in pay.
Anyone else? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, if I can, I just, I, again, I would, given the resolution it has presented, if, if there is a, a motion to pass the resolution, I think the effective, in two places where it says effective date of, December 18th, it should indicate an effective date of today.
Thank you. Mr. Sorey, you said you presented this as a resolution, but we can pull things out because of the deputies and that I'm concerned with. I think the other employees got a raise, and I think that the deputies are deserving of a raise as well. So I would like to make a motion that we give the deputies a 2 point, or is it 2.5 percent cost of living raise. Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the increase for the deputies.
Madam Chair, can I get a little- Clarification real quick. So I understand what you're doing, but do we still have to do them separately based on the way the agenda is set up in order to vote on that indivi, like, would we, if everyone's in agreement, I think it still has to go under the agenda items as part of that number?
I think you're making a complete modification. It wouldn't hurt either way. That's certainly something that you could do, a separate resolution for all three would be fine.
We decided a long time ago, when the deputy supervisor came on board, that we wanted them compensated all the same.
Right.
So that's why I thought one resolution, is this, this is going to be a resolution for them as well? Or is this just a motion?
Does it have to be a resolution for deputies?
No, it does not. But I would recommend that you make it a resolution, so that you can correct it at a later time.
So why don't you make the motion to create a resolution for deputies specifically, indicating what you're looking to do, so that, that becomes an actual item that we vote on particularly, and then the resolution is created?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And if I may, you, you could certainly indicate that your resolution would be, the language is contained in the proposed resolutions as it relates to the deputies of each of the departments and that, and I think that would be sufficient.
Okay.
I should do like Roger says, what he said, he used to say. I'll make a motion that we create a resolution to cover the deputies' compensation. And that includes the deputy supervisor, deputy clerk, and deputy treasurer to create a 2.5 percent compensation package.
Are you going to still support that?
I do.
Is that still confusing?
No, it's fine.
Then Ms. Posey, you can call the roll.
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer, Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinom?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. Now we go to the, which do you want to do, the board of trustees or the elected officials?
We have to do your supervisor.
We should still stick with the supervisors, but any motion you would have, make sure that you exclude any reference in the current, in the proposed resolutions to any of the deputies.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would just like to point out a few facts. When the, when this item came about and it was suggested, and that we were going to use it as an agenda item, I did my own research on my position in particular, but as a whole. And what we looked at was, in 2014, or since 2014, the board has approved one lump sum in the amount of $2,600 and 13.5 percent increase for the management union, which equates to 2.25 percent yearly. Currently, department heads make approximately 20 percent more than the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer. As department heads, which these three positions are, in our township, we're voting members and we are department heads, we decided, no matter the person in the position, it was important to attempt to close the salary gap, gap between department heads that report to us. And by doing this increase for 2020, we're not technically voting in ourselves a raise, we're indicating that whoever is elected into these positions, based on the comparables that we have reviewed, this is a salary that is respectable to those positions. It's, and it also closes the gap between the department heads that report to us at a 20 percent gap, it closes it to an approximately 10 percent gap. So if the recommended salary for these three positions is approved, it won't be effective until November of 2020. And at that time, it'll be almost six years since these positions had, have had an increase, which equates to approximately 1.85 percent increase yearly. If the 2.8 percent, which has been also suggested this evening, is approved, the annual rate of increase over five years is less than 1 percent. So those are just some facts, when you're making this consideration this evening, to take into account, that I would just like to bring to your attention and the research that I did for this topic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sorey, you said you take the supervisors first?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any motions about the supervisor's position?
I'll make a motion to make effective and establish the current annual salary for the township supervisor at $92,520 effective December 18th, 2019.
We're going to pick that up. I thought we were going to do that. It has to be today.
January 8th.
I'm sorry, January 8th, 2020.
That's my fault.
I'm just reading.
That's my fault.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Okay, that motion dies. Move on then to the clerk and the deputy clerk. Or no, the clerk.
Madam Chair, just so I can, you, you could, because the motion fails, and we still are on that particular agenda item, you could ask if there's any other motions relative to that agenda item, if you, if you wish to. I'm not saying there has to be, I'm just, this would be the appropriate time. Okay.
Okay. Are there any motions about the clerk?
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to speak on behalf of that, because there were questions with regards to comparables in the clerk's position. So my, I would assume that most of you don't understand what the clerks do exactly. So I would like to take the opportunity to explain what we do and how you can compare in the public sector, because it's a public job. These recommended, recommended, recommended salaries are relative to the other positions throughout Macomb County. So Macomb Township, our main responsibility, obviously, is administering elections. We're also the record keepers responsible for FOIA, vendor permits, and other things. But our, obviously, our major responsibility is administering elections. So in Macomb County, when I attend the Clerks Institute, we are separated by population throughout there. So 100 tables of clerks throughout the state of Michigan, we are separated into a specific group because of our population size. There's generally about three tables of us that have the population size and administer elections for the amount of people that we administer them for. Macomb Township's population is 88,000. We have 62,642 registered voters. We administer elections in 37 precincts. And we have 21,687 permanent absentee voters. That's an entirely separate election that you have to administer from the polling locations. We also train approximately 400 election workers for every single election. And my current salary is 85,000. I'm also a voting member as a clerk. In many communities, the clerk's main responsibility are elections, and they are not voting members. So they do not have to do the role of being a board member in addition to their responsibility as the clerk. In Canton Township, their clerk is also a voting member of the board. Their population is 95,000. They have 69,000 registered voters. They administer elections for 40 precincts, and they administer elections for 20,000 absentee voters. That clerk's salary is 99,586. I'm often paired up with Canton Township at all the clerks' conferences and institutes, because our responsibilities are very similar. In Troy, they are not a voting member of the board, so their only responsibility is the responsibilities of the clerk. Their population is 85,000. They have 60,000 registered voters, and they administer elections in 31 precincts. And they have only 10,000 absentee voters. And Troy's clerk's salary currently is 110,553. Farmington Hills is a non-voting member, population of 80,000, 62,500 registered voters. They administer elections in 27 precincts, and they only have 18,500 absentee voters. And their clerk's salary is 113,655. Westland is another community that I'm often associated with when I'm at the conferences, are a non-voting member. The population is 81,747. They have 62,000 registered voters, 41 precincts, AV voters 10,879, and his salary is 108,399. So these figures do exist in the public sector. And our, my responsibility as the township clerk mirrors these communities' responsibilities. I wanted to ensure, if I'm sitting up here proposing this, that these numbers that's being recommended, recommended is not off-base. So I just thought that would be good information for you to know, in comparison to communities that do the same work when they're administering elections for their communities. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thanks, Clerk Posey. Me and you have talked about this. And like I said, I think it's important for the community to know that we are talking behind the scenes too. And I think you knew I was gonna ask, you know, have some tough questions and some concerns about this. I appreciate what you just did, and I respect your office and you do a lot. But when we drop back down into our county, into Macomb County, Clinton Township, who has a population of 102,865, and we were very attached to comparing ourselves to Clinton Township, because we, the first go around, when we introduced this in December, we included a letter from their clerk. We included some numbers from their compensation commission, who by the way, a resident brought up, and this was reported, Clinton Township actually turned down the recommendation of bringing their clerk's salary up to 90,000. Clinton Township's clerk only makes 84,171, I'm sorry. The clerk, I'm sorry, in Clinton Township is 81,024. I was looking at Supervisor. If you go to Shelby Township, we say it's a population of, the information that was provided to us from Clinton Township, based on CAC 2008 estimate, Shelby Township has a population of 80,816. Their clerk currently makes $85,000. Both in Clinton Township and Shelby, they do not opt out of PA 152. They enact the provisions of that. And Clinton Township clerk would pay a hard cap and Shelby Township would pay 80/20. I, I do think it's fair to compare ourselves to surrounding communities in our county.
I don't disagree with you, Trustee Buzino. Also, with that information, there are other communities that have half of our population, half of our registered voters, half of our precincts, and half of our AV voters that make $90,000. So where I'm at in the comparable is there are a low, there's a low end and there's a high end. So there are clerks that do equal amount if less than my position, but are in the 113 range. So the salary that's being suggested is in the middle, it's not high, and it's not low.
And I just want to point out that I'm being consistent. When we talked about the HR General Counsel position, I wasn't too excited about going too far out to compare us to communities either. So I've been, I've been consistent with, with that.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanted to take the time to specifically point out the responsibilities in my position that are relative to administering the elections, which is our, one of our major responsibilities. And that separates comparing to each community, because it, what I do and what Roseville or Clinton Town, well, Clinton Township's about the same, but if what I do and say what Farmington Hills do could be different based on, we are the number one community for absentee voters. Right now, we are the top community for 21,000 absentee voters. So that's equivalent to administering two elections on the same day. So we are the top at the election, or the absentee voters currently.
Um, thank you. Madam Chair, this is gonna be my last point. I just want to clarify, I keep mentioning PA 152, and I talk about educating residents. When the economy kind of took a turn, 2009, 2010, the Michigan Legislature, to help communities pay for their healthcare costs, gave communities a tool to help with that. I don't necessarily think that was pointed towards every community, because some communities have some tremendous legacy costs that we don't. Part of that is because of the way we, we contract some public safety things out. But having said that, PA 152, what it is, is if you enact that, you can do one of two things. You can make employees pay a percentage of their healthcare through a hard cap, saying they're not going to pay any more than that. I'm a public employee. I get paid by public tax dollars. My school district enacted 152 on us as soon as that law was passed. And when our, when our contract expired, the next one, they enacted it. So I, I went from paying nothing for healthcare as a public educator to paying about $5,000 a year between health, between about $4,000 for a premium and $1,000 deductible for my family that I do not do. Clinton Township and Shelby Township has enacted provisions of that. Again, Clintons went to a hard cap that their employees will pay a certain amount, plus 5% every year. Okay? So they've actually built that in. Shelby goes to 80/20. Whatever they negotiate with, whoever they, I'm not sure who Shelby Township uses, I don't know if it's Blue Cross or, or what they use, but they make the employees pay 20%. We as a township, in our budget, opt out of PA 152. We have since the legislature passed it. So when compared, I'm, I'm just explaining what that is. And I do think on some level, I speak from a basis to where I can empathize with employees that have to pay that, because I, I had to go from paying nothing to paying for that for my family as a public employee.
Anyone else? Are there any motions regarding the clerk's salary? Hearing none, I will assume that that is a dead issue. Move on to the treasurer. Any questions on the treasurer's position?
Madam Chair, only because the resident asked, I'm not, I wasn't prepared for this. But I just want to let residents know what a treasurer does in a township. The treasurer is responsible, in our case, to mail out, we have 30,000, over 30,000 bills that we mail out, summer and winter. We have to make sure that those bills are right. We also work with our assessor in, in making adjustments to the tax bills. Nobody likes tax collectors, so I get that part. But it's a necessary duty that a treasurer has to perform. We also are in, the treasurer is also responsible for investing the township's money. And watching the fees and everything else as well. And I welcome you, anytime you want to come into my office and see what we do on a daily basis, I think you'd have a better idea. And I think also, I'm very proud of Macomb Township, that our elected officials are considered full-time and are usually here every day, 8:00 to 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any motions regarding the treasurer's salary? Hearing none, that fails also. We will now move on to new business. The first is the Water and Sewer Department.
Madam Trustee?
And this is...
Would it be okay?
I'm sorry?
Five-minute break, please.
She needs a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess.
Pardon me? Do a five-minute break, please.
Okay, sure. Five-minute recess. Sorry, Jerry.
Did we vote on the doubt?
I have an announcement before we continue. One of our board members has taken ill, and she is not able to finish the meeting. So in case there might be a roll call vote, could I have a motion to exclude her name from being called for that resolution?
Madam Chair, go ahead, Jim. No, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Nevers, seconded by Mr. Buzino, to omit calling Ms. Smith's name for any roll call votes. All right, we will now...
Take a vote in it.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by saying nay? Thank you. Water and Sewer Department has a request to pay construction pay estimate number six for sanitary sewer rehab by FCIPP and SCIPP lining project. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you recommending we move forward with Pay Cert number six. This will be payable to Insetraform Technologies. This is the company that's doing a lot of rehab of the sewers this past season. We are recommending we approve this in the amount of $183,574.61. I might add that engineering has also reviewed this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Madam Chair, excuse me. I'll make a motion to approve the payment of construction estimate number six, 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining AEW project number 0249-0163 in the amount of $183,574.61.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries. The next one is to approve the final balancing contract modification number two for the 2016 Macomb Township Water Main Gap Project. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you again, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight recommending we approve modification number two for the contract that just stated. This will be a small increase to this contract of $696.16. And we are recommending approval of this.
Thank you. Any questions about this one?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the final balancing contract modification number two, 2016 Macomb Township Water Main Gap Project. Contract value is $717,873.65. Project number 0249-0101.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve this request also. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries also. The next one is to pay the final construction pay estimate number four for the 2016 Macomb Township Water Main Gap Project.
Thank you again, board. And this, this project goes hand in hand with the project we just had the contract mod on. And this will be payable to DVM Utilities in the amount of $36,555.3. And this is Supervisor Dunn, the final, the final pay estimate for this contract.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wanglin? Are there any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve to pay the final construction pay estimate number four, 2016 Macomb Township Water Main Gap Project, net earnings of $36,555.3. Project number 0249-0101.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries. And the last one from Mr. Wanglin is a request to approve the contractor's application and certificate for payment application number one for the 23-mile road pay estimate number one. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight requesting we approve Pay Cert number one for this project that's right here on 23 and Card that you see going on, which I might add is, is nearing completion, other than restoration, which will take place in the spring. This will be payable to LDS Incorporated in the amount of $557,115.68. Water and Sewer, as well as engineering, are recommending we move forward on this.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the contractor's application and certificate for payment application number one, Macomb Township 23-mile road water main pay estimate one, project number 181263, in the amount of $557,115.68.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
The engineering department has a request to approve the pathway abeyance for 46543 Fairchild Road. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. This is a typical request that we get from a property owner who is building a home in an area of the township that doesn't have sidewalks. The township board has recently approved several other sidewalk abeyances in this area. This is north end of Fairchild, basically at North Avenue, just south of 26 Mile. There are no other sidewalks in this area. We've reviewed the request and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions? We have a couple others in there that...
I think we've approved two or three others in this area.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the pathway abeyance for 56543 Fairchild Road, parcel number 0801176-028.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the pathway abeyance as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? Motion carries. The next one is to approve the change order number two for the 2019 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, board members. This particular change order is for a 2019 program that we just completed. Previously, the board had approved a change order, change order number one, for a little over $30,000. Since the change order was approved, I have worked with the township attorney to acquire an additional easement. We had removed that particular property that we had acquired the easement from, from that year, that program, and we're planning on putting it into the 2020 program. However, we were able to secure it in time to actually get the work done last fall before the, the snowfall. So we're asking for approval, official approval of the change order of $9,284.09. And with that, there's still a decrease in the overall contract amount of $21,334.62. We're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the change order number two for the 2019 pathway gap closure program.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve change order number two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries. And the next one is a request to approve pay estimate number two for the pathway gap closure program for 2019. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, board members. This is the same project that we approved the change order previously and does include that amount that we included in the change order in this amount for the pay estimate. It also includes other items that were completed that they have not been paid for. The amount of the pay estimate is $33,972.36. We are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the pay estimate number two for the 2019 pathway gap closure program in the amount of $33,972.36.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Buzino to approve pay estimate number two for the 2019 pathway gap closure. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay? That motion carries. And then we have a request for acknowledgement and approval supporting the transfer of land and change of land use for the right-of-way to Macomb County Department of Roads for parcels Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. As the boards are aware, the Department of Roads is in the process of acquiring right-of-way for the widening of 23-mile road, basically between North Avenue and Romeo Plank. There are two, the two properties that are referenced in, in the memo are farmland, basically on either side of Hitenreich and, and 23-mile road. These properties are subject to an agreement that they have with the state of Michigan with regard to tax collection. In, in the provision in that agreement that they have says that if they transfer any of that property to somebody else, they might be subject to paying back taxes on the property. This is for essentially 17 feet of right-of-way along their frontage of 23-mile road. The state of Michigan has reviewed this and are in agreement that this is, doesn't necessarily, it doesn't affect the farming that's going on the property, and have no objection to this. However, they want some acknowledgement from the township that this, that this is their position and the township doesn't object to their, their position. I have discussed this with Mr. Hickey with regard to any implications that it has on the township, and he doesn't have any objections, so we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion for the acknowledgement and approval supporting the transfer of land and change of land use for right-of-way to Macomb County Department of Roads for parcel numbers 0816... Department of Roads for parcel numbers 0816400007 and 0815300008.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the transfer of land as requested by the Department of Roads. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have Human Resources and this is a request to initiate the recruitment process for an Elections Manager. Mr. Sordi.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and I'm going to say this unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, and I think many members here of the township are concerned, but not for the individual retiring. Clerk Posey received a letter of intent to retire at the end of business on Friday, January 10th, for the Election Manager's position. That obviously is going to leave a vacancy in the position. And we need to, I'm requesting that we recruit to fill that position. Because of the nature of the election cycle this year and the need for Ms. Posey to properly staff her position and because there are eligible employees, or there are employees within the department and in the union eligible for a promotion to this department, I'm going to ask for a second part to this motion, which was that if an individual is promoted from within pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, that we can start the recruitment process for that vacancy as well. So, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we need two motions?
You could do it either way. You can do a motion with two parts or two motions, whatever anyone's preference is.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Sordi?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Elections Manager and also authorize the initiation, to initiate the recruitment for any subsequent vacancies within the department if an internal candidate is promoted.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Election Manager. And with the caveat that should someone from within be promoted, that we start the immediate recruitment process a second time for a department, for the Clerk's department, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And number 24A is the add-on, and that is a request to initiate recruitment process for a Supervisor in the Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Sordi.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, first let me thank you for allowing us to include this on the agenda this evening. Today, the Water and Sewer Superintendent is, with Cappy to me and several others, received a resignation from the current Water and Sewer Supervisor. Due to the nature of the disposition, the responsibilities involved, the responsibilities of all of the, all the individuals in the Water and Sewer Department, it's imperative that we move this along so the department's properly staffed as soon as possible. So with that, I'm asking for a motion to approve the recruitment process for position of Water and Sewer Supervisor.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Water and Sewer Supervisor.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to begin the recruitment process immediately. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And now we have Parks and Rec. And the first one is the 24 Mile Foss Road Park, Whitney Macomb Park. Mr. DeCaro.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Parks and Recreation Department and the Engineering Department would like to present some potential updates to the Whitney Macomb Park project. During our monthly review with staff members from Fishbeck, few changes have been proposed. These changes would include to relocate the dog park from the site, add two multipurpose fields to the site, add additional parking to the site, and modify the entrance road from 24 Mile Road. You can see this would be a new configuration of what the park would look like. We, obviously, we agree with these changes. We are asking for approval for the changes in the site plan for Whitney Macomb Park, and we are both here available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. DeCaro, there was a concern with regards to the splash park being at this location. The anticipated timeframe for that park to be open is Memorial Day weekend till Labor Day weekend, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's June, July, and August. So, three months is the max amount of time that there, that park would even be, that's particular amenity in the park that would be available to the residents.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Approximately, how many feet are between the back lot line of the residence and the splash park? Do you have any idea?
I really would have no idea to be truthful with you.
Yeah, we don't have a scalable drawing with us, so I'm not, we can provide that information.
I'm just wondering how far the noise is going to carry. Because it's going to be wooded, for one thing.
Correct.
Which would block some of the sound. And the back of their yards, I believe, is pretty heavily wooded.
We're proposing to provide landscaping along that area as well.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
And again, obviously, that's where the experts located, that was the best place to put it in the park.
Right.
That was all taken in consideration.
Also, Mr. DeCaro, can you indicate the hours of operation for that particular park? It's not, it's, there's restricted hours that that splash pad will be open to the public, correct?
Splash pad, we have not chosen the hours yet, but it's usually going to be somewhere between 10:00 and 8:00, 8:00 p.m. in the evening.
Mr. Van Tiflin, if I may, I, just because I attend the Macomb County Department of Roads meetings, I just want to reiterate that we are working with the Macomb County Department of Roads to get traffic signals, traffic signs. They are aware of the situation at 24 and Foss. They are aware of this project that we anticipate putting in that area. We don't have specific complete control over those things happening. We can only meet with them, advise them as to what we're doing with regards to the park there, the anticipated traffic, and work with them in conjunction to accomplish the things that we need to ensure the safety of the residents in that area. So, we are working diligently with the county to accomplish that.
Jim, most of this would be handled through your site plan review and that type of thing, working with the Department of Roads as well as the Drain Office and various entities that come into this when they're giving their approvals?
Currently, the park is under design, so the actual detailed engineering and site plan are being prepared. The Board had previously approved a concept plan last year for the park. We're now making some modifications. The design engineer will make those modifications if they're approved tonight, and those will be incorporated into the site plan as well as the engineering plan. The next step would be for them to submit an application for site plan approval to the township. That would be reviewed by the departments. It would also go to the Planning Commission. They would hold a public hearing, and the Planning Commission would vote to, you know, approve or deny the request from the township to put the park there and the configuration of the park. So, that all hinges, obviously, on the approval from the Board tonight to proceed with this design. If there's some revisions, then that would be delayed until, you know, the revisions are made and brought back to the Board.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the changes in the site plan for Whitney Macomb Park.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the changes in the site plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, we have a proposal for professional design services for the Wade Nursery property. Mr. DeCaro again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Parks and Recreation and Engineering staff have met with Fishbeck with a list of desired activities at the Wade Nursery property. The activities include the dog park, a historic village, a crafts market area, a possible perimeter path, related parking services and driveways. Scope of the service provided by Fishbeck would include proposed park facilities, base plan preparation, site inventory and analysis, preliminary development plan, and project meeting. We are requesting that you approve Fishbeck to provide professional design services for the Wade Nursery property for a fee of $20,800. We are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but there were several meetings conducted with the property that the township owns relative to the township's recreation plan, what the number one requests were by the residents for amenities that they wanted throughout the township. And although they're not always exposed all the time, there is conversations and considerations that if these particular pieces pan out as suggested and recommended, further advancements to the Town Center Park, which is currently only utilized as a practice field for Macomb Mustangs and LaCrosse. So, we want to enhance that area. We've been waiting for the opportune time so that we can connect 24 and Foss with a path through, over to Town Hall, past the pond, over to an area over here where we may potentially expand with pavilions, and we can hold our concerts in the parks and have permanent structures there to offer a bigger amenity for our concert in the park. So, there are conversations and ideas, but as new properties became available, when we were planning certain things at other properties, we had to make some arrangements so that we could make all these advancements happen. So, I'm happy with the properties that we've been able to attain to accomplish these things, and hopefully, in the future, you'll see that the ideal plan, when it all comes together, will be of great amenity for the township.
I would agree.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Fishbeck to provide professional design services for the Wade Nursery property for a fee of $20,800.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the design services for the Wade Nursery property. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is the professional planning services for the Town Center Park. Mr. DeCaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Ms. Posey just described, to the final piece of that puzzle, the Parks and Recreation and Engineering staff has met with Fishbeck to discuss the possible improvements to the Town Center Park area. Improvements would include a permanent music venue, open space for bounce houses in our kids' zone, a food truck area, and onsite parking. The layout would coordinate with the current Civic Center Macomb Corners Park Pathway Gap Program. The scope of the project would include proposed park facilities, base plan preparation, site inventory and analysis, preliminary development plan, project meeting. At this time, we are asking for approval for Fishbeck, excuse me, to provide professional planning services for the Town Center Park area for a fee of $22,500. And again, we're available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, again, I just want to indicate that since I was elected, Town Center Park has been something that I've been on, Mr. DeCaro, about for quite some time.
I would agree with that.
My reasons for it is if we were utilizing it as a practice field, I being a parent that had a child that played for the Macomb Mustangs, it wasn't ideal for the parent. There's no place to sit, there's no shade, there's no shelter, there's no bathrooms. It's uncomfortable, so...
It's clearly not a park at this point.
Right, so, I mean, my suggestion was if we're going to utilize it for that, then we need to make it something to where it's enjoyable for all of the community that brings their children there to participate in Macomb Township Mustangs or intramural sports. So, I'm excited to see that these practice fields have been switched over to where they can get shade and shelter and utilize a bathroom if necessary. And also, I'm excited to see the potential that can go over there for our concerts in the park. So, this is a great addition.
One other thing about that, and we've discussed this. We are running into a potential problem in the next couple of years for the stage rental that we've been using for, since we've had concerts in the park over at Macomb Corners. We could not build a permanent concert shelter at Macomb Corners because of the soccer field. So, this would actually be very beneficial for that, for that program.
Okay. Any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the professional planning services for Town Center Park in the amount of $22,500.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the professional design services. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, we come to public comments on non-agenda items. If you want to talk to the Board, please come to the podium, state your name, and there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mark Grabow, Macomb Township. File, address is on file with the clerk. Please don't get me wrong, I like to see and hear the improvements, the master plan, the park master plan. What I'm talking about is the failure for infrastructure. Here we are again, ahead of the game. You have got to get these roads in line, you've got to get these bridges in line. You guys are now going to put more density with people coming in. You're moving fields over to 24 and Foss. Do the neighbors realize what's going to happen there? You've got kids, you've got families, you've got light pollution. We have parks now with lights on until 2:00 in the morning. That's my money you people are spending at paying bills. Ms. Goodhue, go ahead and smile. Why don't you come over and look when those lights are still on?
I can see the lights from my home.
Good, why aren't they shut off?
They're shut off.
Mr. DeCaro, why are they not shut off? Ms. Dunn, do your job and run this township. We, the residents, are tired of the expenses you're wasting money on. I have no problem with doing improvements for all the residents, but for God's sakes, stop wasting the money. The noise pollution is horrendous. The light pollution is painful. You don't live here anymore. You slid into a little hidden condo. How about you listen to all this? Pay attention to the lights that are on constantly. Pay attention to the noise. These guys don't have time to run around and chase people out of the parks at 11:00. They've got other jobs to do. We need them on the road doing their job, not policing the parks. We have enough problems at 21 Mile. You guys have parks all over the place, and we still have huge issues. And you don't want me to go public with the issues that we have in those parks. For God's sakes, let's pay attention to what's going on, get the infrastructure in line, get these roads improved, get the sidewalks in line. These people at 24 and Foss do not want these fields over there without getting some good green barriers and some hard barriers around their homes. And do you think anybody in that subdivision across from Town Center Park wants to listen to a concert venue without you getting those barriers in line? Let's pay attention, folks. You've got 90 acres, put it where it belongs. And don't tell me you can't use the dump. I sat in that chair. I know what we can and what we can't do. Stop lying to the public.
Good evening. My name's Marina Cantarella Russo, and I live at 53950 Foss Road. What I'm concerned about is safety issues, and I'm experiencing the safety issues right now as it is with the speed limits, the way they are, 55 miles an hour. You know, no one's doing 55. They're going 60, 65 miles an hour down. I call it Foss Highway. And my mailbox is across the road. I don't know if you guys can do anything about that, or look, I try to do some... I don't know if you guys can do anything about that, or looked, I tried to do something with the post office. So just imagine people are going 55 miles an hour or more and I have to go across the street when it's dark because there's no lighting. There was last month a car accident right in front of my house, and I say, I go out there with a little flashlight in order to get my mail. I look around in other areas, like 25 and 24, and I see that they have their mailboxes in front of their house. So that's one issue that I'm concerned about, is my life, my safety with the speed limit. Now with the parks, I mean, I love parks, don't believe, don't get wrong, I love the idea of the parks, but I'm worrying about the congestion. You can't get out of your driveway, will I be able to get into my driveway? 24 and Foss is a real issue now, even just trying to leave, certain times of the day you don't even want to go down the street. Congestion has improved, not improved, but has increased a lot. And I agree with the man in front of me, if you can somehow figure out how to improve the understructure, how to get that road in front of the library, you know, more connection between 24, 25 and 23. Because I just feel like everybody's using Foss Road because there's really no other way to get to the township, and now you're doing all these other parks, and they're going so fast. I mean, really fast. They use it as like a Speedway. So if you can look into that, please, I would deeply appreciate. Oh yeah, I forgot one thing. There used to be a no pass. You know, there's a yellow line, isn't there, when there's a yellow line, you can't, you're not supposed to pass and go, you know, on the other side? Well, there used to be on Foss Road, because there's a hill if you go the other way, it used to be like a no pass zone. People like, it's right by where my house is, people just like, when I'm pulling my driveway, they'll pass right over. And if someone is going on the other side down the street, you know, where the hill is, there could be, you know, a bad car accident. Another thing too, is I don't know if you guys are aware about coyotes, you know, you're doing all these parks. We have coyotes in the area where I live. So with the dog park and everything, you've got to be careful because I think they'll like them. Have a good evening.
John Parkinson, address is on file with clerk. First and foremost, I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to the Kryzminski family and to the board. Many of you worked for him, with Mr. Kryzminski for many years, and I'm sure his passing comes a great loss to you all. The other thing is, and Madam Supervisor, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I know this was a previously discussed item on the agenda, however, when I read in the Chronicle that we purchased the Wade Nursery property, I believe you were quoted as saying that we'd be putting maintenance garages in there, and I didn't hear you mention that we would be putting maintenance garages on that property. So is that going to happen still? Is that still an option? And then maybe you said maybe soccer field as well. So I want to know if that's going to happen, and surely I'll start attending some of the zoning and planning commission meetings as well. But I'd like to know if that's going to happen. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dale Cartwright, my address is on file. I, after moving here, I lived here years back and I moved back again. I was in Rochester for a while, so I'm probably a little spoiled because sidewalks go somewhere. My niece Victoria Cartwright was hit and killed a few years back on Heidenreich. If, after driving back and forth on Foss several times, sorry, and 24 Mile, families are riding their bikes to get places inside of a highway. We need sidewalks. So please, get infrastructure in before you start putting more places for people to go. It'd be great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, we will move on to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I just wanted, my pen ran out. I don't know if somebody saw me scratching this out. I was trying to take, well, I was trying to take down names and I couldn't. So I got some of your names. I said last meeting, keep talking about the parks. You know, seeing that it's in the development stages, let them know what you need. It's not an easy decision. I remember when we were thinking about putting the parks at 21 behind the fire station, everyone said, "Go out to 24 and Foss and build." Now we're out there and this is starting. Oh, it happened at meetings, believe me. I can tell you, some of the people that spoke at the microphone tonight said, "Yo, I think Mr. Graybaugh did," and said, "Go out to 24 and Foss and build." So it's not an easy decision. Keep talking to everybody. It's your township, not ours. Keep talking, keep trying to get the development. Parks are going to go up. If you look at a map, you know, we talk about other communities and what they do and don't have. If you look at a map of parks in McComb County, we are, no offense, Mr. DeCaro, we are way underparked. We don't have parks everywhere. I disagree with that. If you look at a map of parks in a county, you look at Shelby, I mean, it's almost like a, it's almost like a snowstorm of parks on these, this data points on this map, and then all of a sudden, it's not around McComb Township. So I know people are asking for parks. I don't know where to go with everything. I've mentioned I have some relatives that are huge pickleball players. They want pickleball somewhere, okay? They do, they want outdoor courts. I have a family member who won't play indoors with the other ones who play at the rec center. He says, "I've got to be outside." People are doing these things, but keep the input. We don't know. I mentioned last meeting that, you know, contact Jim, we had the holiday, you know, so offices were closed. Keep doing that. That's all I can say, but like I said, it's not easy decisions, and some pieces of the park plan we necessarily can't always talk about right now. I think it's a fair enough way to say that, just because we can't, for future plans. Hopefully one day it's all solid where we can just all, have the master plan plotted out completely on a master plan park, but for reasons we can't do that. And I don't mean to sound coy or non-transparent, but for some reasons we can't do that. But keep asking, keep making that known. I completely agree with everybody that says there's a problem with road congestion. I agree with you. I don't think it's just a McComb Township problem. I think it's a state problem. Our clerk talked about working with our county. We're a general township. We can offer to do some things with some roads financially. We really can't control road projects. We can put in for it, we can apply for it, we can ask, does it agree with our master plan? We can't do that. You know, we're not a city, we're not a charter township, we just can't do that. I wish we could. Even Shelby Township, they matched a lot of those dollars, that's about all they could do when they got a lot of those road projects. Communicate with our county commissioners, communicate with their state legislatures. Our roads are underfunded. And we all know Lansing's playing some huge political games right now, forgetting funding to general townships, among others, to get our roads fixed. Keep on it. I agree. I came back from Costco the other day, okay? If anybody knows me, I'm a shopper. It's a joke to some, but I'm a shopper. And at one of my places, Costco, I sat through 14 stoplights at 23 and Hayes, coming back home at 4:00. I know the congestion, okay? Don't write me a ticket for this. I remember texting my wife, I'm on my eighth stoplight right now, okay? So I get it, I understand it, and I want, I want that to get fixed too, more than anybody, okay? I coach travel baseball, I coach high school baseball, I go from one school to another. Sometimes I'm late because of the congestion over here. I try to get to a game to Dakota from Romeo, because I coach for, I guess, I'm sprinkling in a lot of things here, and sometimes I'm worried, am I going to get there on time with the traffic? I get it, okay? I think we all need to work together in infrastructure and funding for roads. That's my personal opinion. Yes?
Would you mind if we took a little?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, was I talking too long?
Oh, that's all right.
Okay, I'm sorry, you okay?
I'll get back with you in a second.
We're adjourned for five minutes.
Mr. Buzzenow, continue.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to go on to another topic, I'm sorry. The other, only thing I wanted to cover is we are taking applications till Friday for the open trustee position. Townships can have a certain amount of days, 45 days, to appoint somebody. The process that we go about and do that is, we could just appoint somebody up here. I would not agree with that, I would be disagreeing with it. We are taking applications, okay? I heard somebody say that, you know, the decision's already been made, they got somebody in mind, if you haven't received a phone call, you're not in. I don't know what that person's talking about. I'm a school teacher, I'm not calling people all day. I have no idea. And it's going to take four votes to appoint anybody, okay? And people talk, if you've been paying attention the last year, year and a half up here, this board used to always vote 7-0, most of the time when I watched it, I apologize, but it seemed like a lot. Not recently, not for the last year and a half. We do have a lot of unanimous votes, but we have had 6-1 votes, we've had 5-2 votes, we've had 4-3 votes. I cannot, based on the process we're using, I can't vote for anybody unless you apply, okay? There's one friend that I had that I said you think would be good for, he ran away from it and said, "Not in a million years would I do that." Okay? So I'm like, okay, you know, that was my reaching out to somebody. And you had, I can tell you that from talking to some of my fellow board members, there are certain things we're looking for. And if the person in this process comes up to the microphone, or we get to call people once we get the application, by the way, do we know how many people have applied? Do we have any? No? Is she okay? I'm just going to cut this short because maybe we can get out of here, but I'm just saying, apply any, if there's a plan out there to appoint somebody I don't know about and they have four votes, let me in on it, because I don't know that plan. So if you want to be on this board, please apply by Friday, we can go through the applications. Of course, that meeting is next week, and I look forward. I have a couple of things in mind that I would like to see from a candidate, and if they have it, I'm voting for them. That's me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we will move on to treasurer's comments.
Every year, at the end of the previous year, we get bombarded with tax payments. It's also unfortunately the time when the mortgage companies send us their files as well. So typically, we get behind about a week. We are working diligently to catch up, and it's going smoothly, and I just want, we do receive a lot of calls from people who have not had their checks cashed yet, but we are working really fast and it's going to work out just like it has every year, and just be patient with us. The payments are, the bills are, when you send in your bill, and we receive it in the mail, it is dated for the date we receive it, and that is the date we post it. Doesn't matter when we do it, it's dated for the date we receive it. So if you sent it in in December, it will be posted for December, providing the post office delivered it here. Also, I would like to read these comments. "Mr. Roger Kryzminski had great pride and respect for his country and his township and the service he gave to both. He was a true public servant and never made his decisions for personal or political reasons, but only for the good of his community as a whole. He compassionately took care of his wife during her illness and never complained about his own. He was a rock in the foundation of this township. When people came to this podium and tried to chip away at that rock, he held his head ah, his head high, knowing he was doing what he thought was right, and knowing that you cannot in this position please everyone. He was seen often at Town Hall, he sat on many committees, volunteered in many capacities, and always did his homework. We knew he always read through his whole packet, everything. There was highlighting and sticky notes everywhere. He came in or called department heads to get the information straight, so he was ready to make his decision. Roger was well-respected by the people who knew him, and I am lucky to be one of them. He lived a life to be proud of." Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just add one thing to that statement. Every once in a while, there comes a time when you can't remember exactly what went on 20 years ago. And I would tell the department heads, "Call Roger, I'm sure he has it somewhere."
He does.
And he would look, and sure enough, within a half a day, he'd have the answer for whoever needed the information. He was a one-of-a-kind trustee, and he will not be easily replaced. Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, I agree. Clerk's. Clerk's.
Good evening. I'm going to give you an update with regards to the presidential primary election that will take place on March 10th. If you are on our absent mail-in voting list, you have received your application for an absent mail-in ballot by now. The application must be completed and returned to my office to receive your ballot. Please note that Michigan election law requires that the voters to indicate on the application which political party ballot they wish to vote. This requirement only applies to the presidential primary elections. Make sure you check the appropriate box on the application before returning the application to our office. We mailed over 21,000 applications on December 20th, and approximately 5,000 have been returned to date. Please return your application to the clerk's office so we can prepare to mail your ballot for the March 10th presidential primary election. An important note is that the law does not allow the post office to forward a voting ballot. We anticipate mailing the presidential primary ballots the first week in February. If you will not be at your residence during that time, you must indicate an alternative address on your absent mail-in voting application. Lastly, for all the residents, election workers, employees and board members that have had the pleasure of working with Ed Carey, I am both sad and happy to announce he is retiring from the clerk's office. His last day is this Friday, January 10th. So if you see him, please wish him the best as he begins this new adventure in his life. On behalf of the clerk's office, we will never forget the difference he has made, and we were all blessed to have worked alongside him throughout the 17 years of service at McComb Township. He will be deeply missed by many. And also, I would like to provide my condolences to the Kryzminski family at the loss of trustee Kryzminski. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things. Since Mr. Buzzenow brought this up, the trustee position, if you have any desire to fill the vacancy on the township board due to the death of Roger Kryzminski, applications are available online on the McComb Township website. The deadline is Friday at 4:30. After that, the applications will be scanned and forwarded to the board members, and that's so that they can look over all the material, because the following Wednesday, we will have a special board meeting here to interview any of those candidates that want to be interviewed. It's open to the public, you can all come, hear what they have to say, and after that, we will, at the next board meeting, we will appoint someone to fill that position. The other thing that I want to speak about is the census. At the last board meeting, there was a representative from the census here, and as I was leaving, I asked him if he would like me to announce after every board meeting that they need help. Anyone that's 18 years and older, and that includes like high school graduates, college students, veterans, retirees, seasonal workers, people who are bilingual are highly encouraged to apply. There is some literature out on the table as you're leaving. It has a business card with the number to call if you are interested. Also, there is a website you can go on. The selection process begins at the end of the month. There will be paid training occurring in March and April, and after that, most positions work between May and early July. So if you have any free time, please consider helping out. They need something like 1,500 workers for McComb County alone. The other thing that I want to say is, I did not speak about the wage increases for anybody, but I want to tell you all that the three of us right here are here every day from 8:30 to 4:00. We take no vacations, we're available night and day. I never met three or two ladies that have worked harder in this office than these two. So if anyone deserves a raise, they certainly did. That's all I have. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? So motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to adjourn. Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and we are adjourned.